May 28, 2019. I'm my colleagues, so please sign us on electronic devices at this time. I'm passing around the yellow sheet here in front of Ms. Felton. I was passing around a sheet, a graduation schedule. So per the email, the directions sent to the board last week. We hope you're prepared to check. The appropriate boxes indicating which graduation ceremonies you will be attending, because this information needs to be given to our staff by tomorrow. So if you're not prepared to do that today, then you'll have to call Ms. Alexander tomorrow with your choices. The Citizen Advisory Committee applications were online in our SharePoint, and I hope each of you had a chance to look at the applications of the volunteers. We will be having a closed meeting later this evening to deliberate on these applicants and make some decisions. Does anyone have any other matters to discuss? Scene nine, Dr. Spence. We're ready for our first workshop this afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. This is, as you know, a proud military community, and we serve a large military population of military-connected students. And so every year, we bring to you a conversation about how we're working to support our military-affiliated students and families. And so to do that, I think we're kicking off with Dr. Rogers.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. It gives me great pleasure today to work with our team from Student Support Services to provide you with an update on our academic support for military-affiliated students. As a military brat myself who happened to have attended 14 schools before I graduated high school, I can appreciate the work that we do as a school division in welcoming our students who have military backgrounds, as well as their families. So without further ado, I'd like to call Ms. Alexandra Day to begin the conversation, as well as members of her team.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I am Adrienne Day, Director of Student Services in the Office of Student Support Services. And this afternoon, I also have colleagues with me, members of our team, who will also be presenting. Natalie Miggs, Coordinator of Military and Connected Academic Programs, and Military School Counselors, Amanda Yoder and Starr Wiggins. We also have two students with us this afternoon, and Ms. Miggs will introduce them shortly. For the last four years, the Office of Student Support Services has had the honor of presenting to the school board on the support for military families throughout the division. Last year, we had the opportunity to introduce and expand our programming to respond to military-connected students. This afternoon, I'm proud for our office to highlight the impact of the supports implemented and next steps to assist military families throughout Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Today's presentation goals are to present current data on active-duty military-connected students in regards to the VDOE State Military Identifier and impact on VBCPS, offer an overview of military support programs in assisting military-connected and veteran students during the 2018-2019 school year, and to also outline next steps for military support programs during the 2019 and 2020 school year. Military Support Programs addresses the four goals of the Strategic Plan Compass to 2020, as noted on the slide, using multiple strategies. For example, Goal Four, Culture of Growth and Excellence. Those specific strategies addressed are develop and deliver programs and resources to assist families in fulfilling their essential roles in supporting students. And Two, deepen and expand mutually beneficial, ongoing partnerships with businesses, military, faith-based civic, and city agencies to strengthen learning opportunities for our students. Next, Natalie Miggs, Coordinator for Military and Connected Academic Programs, will continue to share the presentation to you this afternoon with the work that's being done in VBCPS as it relates to military support programs.
Good afternoon. Military families face unique challenges, such as frequent moves and enduring deployments. However, this empowers our military students in establishing resiliency and becoming global citizens. With the unique culture of the military and the complexities with academic curriculum, extracurricular clubs, and sports, as well as making friends, VBCPS has recognized the need for academic, social, and emotional support for active-duty and veteran students through military support programs. VBCPS welcomes a large active-duty and veteran population. Currently, we have approximately 18,000 military-connected students enrolled, with many others who have a retired or veteran parent or guardian. Schools throughout the district fluctuate from 10% to 70% military-connected. This school year, over 1,200 military-connected students have transferred into the division, and 1,050 military-connected students have transferred out of VBCPS. Before we dive into the updates on military support programs, in April, Virginia Beach City Public Schools hosted the Collaborative for Student Success, Military Families for High Standards, and the Military Family Institute at Shelton Park Elementary School, and the Art of Being a Military Child Celebration to highlight best practices the division implements to assist military-connected and veteran students. Please take a moment to listen to Captain Joey Frantzen, Commanding Officer of Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek Fort Story, on his experience with military support programs. Just joking. We'll go back a minute. Now please take a minute.
Oftentimes, we've moved a lot. I think I got two weeks notice that we're moving to Little Creek Fort.
Our screen went black up here, and I am not a technical person. Just touch it.
Brewer's gonna help you.
Oh. Okay, thank you. Thank you. You can practice all you want, but man.
Story, and I googled what Fort Story was. As a military, oftentimes, we've moved a lot. I think I got two weeks' notice that we're moving to Little Creek Fort Story, and I googled what Fort Story was, because I'd never been in the area. And, you know, for my boys, that's a huge transition to go through. And one was an IB program up there, moving to IB program here. And sometimes, there can be differences in those programs. But for me, the biggest difference, which is never experienced any other place, any other bases, any other state, was a school liaison officer, Karen Phillips, and then Virginia Beach Military Liaison, Amanda Yoder. That was the difference for us. The transition was seamless. I didn't even know they had these, you know, school liaison officers, right? And I was like, what is this amazing resource? And that was the difference for us, the educating, telling me, helping me, putting me in touch with the right folks as in the middle of the packout, so that when we got down here, we had everything in place, set. And like, for my youngest, Chris, he went from one IB program right into the next IB program, and it was very seamless, which is important. You know, you get the trauma, if you will, of the move done, you want to get him back into normal state, you know, back into school, you know, day-to-day. And so for me, the great, you know, beauty or the hidden secret behind Virginia Beach is, you know, the wonderful ladies here who, you know, do all the hard work with the families in that case-by-case, you know. You know, a lot of families come in with special needs and different, you know, things like that, and they dig in, and they really treat you like they're kids, which is amazing. And so I, you know, again, you know, thank both of you for the amazing.
Captain Frantzen offered a parent perspective of the assistance provided by military support programs. Military Support Programs looks forward to sharing further programming insight in the upcoming slides. Professional learning and partnerships are the core components of military support programs. Military community partnerships include, but are not limited to, Navy School Liaison Officers, Military Family Life Counselors, Anchored for Life, Tutor.com, Oyster Restoration, and the Department of Defense Education Activity Grants. Professional learning to raise awareness and responsiveness is offered in such areas as the PCS Challenge, Register Training, Military Family Life Counselors, and STEMathons. Social and emotional support is provided through Military Family Life Counselors and the School Counseling Services. Peer Transition Support Groups in Virginia Beach City Public Schools are offered through Anchored for Life and Student to Student. Academic transitions include individual academic career planning and ensuring on-time graduation. And post-secondary planning consists of COMS Night, College Options for Military Students, and the application of the GI Bill. Okay. Establishing partnerships and connecting with the community is essential for success of military support programs. VBCPS has established valuable partnerships with local bases, Naval Air Station, Oceana, and JEB Little Creek Fort Story. Just to take a moment to highlight some of the achievements established in the partnerships throughout the division. In July, VBCPS and NAS Oceana were recognized for exemplary individual project partnership for the 2018 Pete Taylor Partnership of Excellence Award at the Military Child Education Coalition's Annual National Training Seminar in Washington, DC. The award was given to honor the annual Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Lab Learning Day, which is held at NAS Oceana each September. In December, the NAS Oceana Air Show was also selected by the International Council of Air Shows as the First Place Platinum Pinnacle Award for Innovation for the Remarkable STEM Partnership with the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek Fort Story also joined in with the accolades in April, when students trained as members of Anchored for Life, the Peer Transition Group, currently funded by the Department of Defense in nine elementary schools and 15 middle schools, were requested by the Comfort Crew to present "An Art of Being a Military Child" book to Mrs. Pence, Second Lady of the United States, along with participating in a community service project to pack 500 deployment kits to assist children throughout the Hampton Roads community. We are proud of the established military-community partnerships. This year, the school board also recognized eight schools for earning the Virginia Department of Education Purple Star designation for demonstrating a military-friendly commitment to their students and families. Military support programs will continue to assist schools in the process as they apply for the VDOE Purple Star designation. Updates to the application of the 2019 VDOE Purple Star designation include procedural safeguards and parental consent provisions related to special education. Amanda Yoder, Military Connected Life Counselor, is also a member of VDOE's Military Student Support Process Action Team, or MISS PAT, and is assisting to develop the state's Purple Star modules for the Purple Star designation. Please take a moment to listen to Mrs. Colindra Mares, who is a student that graduated from Cox High School, and two students currently attending Shelton Park Elementary, who will speak about her experience with a school that has earned the Purple Star designation. Mrs. Mares shares the impact of establishing a responsive culture for students to support students.
I had a twelve grade coming here, and you were wonderful. And you graduated out of New School and not having friends. And the support that she received once she got here was just amazing. So thank you. Thank you both for that. And Ms. Brewer, thank you for everything, you know, just the little phone calls to say, Evelyn did pretty great today, and she's coming home with a picture and an award. That's great. Thank you, Ms. Keller, for always answering my crazy emails. I know I was just kind of like throwing them at you right before I got here. I mean, my son has an infant peace, so he has special needs, and the meetings and everything, just emailing you everything before I got here. Thank you so much for all your help and everything, you know. Thank you guys for being such great support to me and my family. Thank you.
VBCPS Military Support Programs works diligently to transition military-connected This year, Military Support Programs has continued to extend partnerships to support military-connected and veteran students. MAP, Military Assistance Portal, is a partnership with students from the Advanced Technology Center, the College of William &amp; Mary, and Machu Industries, funded by Project Grit, a current DODA grant. Please welcome Valen Dulce, Senior from Lanstown High School, and Alexis Osipov, Senior from Kellum High School, who are participating in a paid internship that will continue throughout this summer. As part of MAP, Military Assistance Portal, they will share insights into their internship. Ladies?
Good afternoon. I'm Alexis Osipov.
And I'm Valen Dulce, and we're Military Assistance Portal interns.
Beginning in February, we began working with Dr. Harding, Mr. Machu, and Mrs. Miggs on MAP, the Military Assistance Portal, to develop an application for VBCPS military families.
The application should be helpful for VBCPS faculty, families, and children to effectively identify available military resources throughout the Hampton Roads community and VBCPS.
Since February, we've been learning about project management and the role it plays in an internship. We have the opportunity to develop an interactive MAP project document reference for all vested partners and future MAP interns to document the project scope of MAP.
We've engaged in the use of Trello, a project management tool that organizes project boards, lists, and cards to create a visual system of project management.
We've acquired a basic understanding and applied the method of Agile. Agile is used to keep tasks moving, embrace change, and create a product that is most beneficial for the user rather than a corporation.
Most recently, we've developed our first two user stories alongside Ms. Miggs as a junior scrum master and a junior product owner to set the focus for development of the welcome screen and also determine how a user will gain access to MAP.
Thank you, Valen and Alexis. And now I speak on behalf of everyone in this room that we're excited to see the final project of MAP, Military Assistance Portal, when it's complete. Professional learning to increase awareness and responsiveness is the other essential component for military support programs. The PCS Challenge, Permanent Change in Station, is an interactive professional learning developed in collaboration with VBCPS Military Support Programs and the Navy School Liaison Officers, where faculty members have an opportunity to gain a perspective on the unique culture of the military and gain a brief glimpse into what it might be like to PCS, which is the military term for moving. Debbie Patch, Navy Mid-Atlantic Regional School Liaison Officer, shares insight for us into the PCS Challenge experience.
So in today's training, we simulated a military move. Everyone that was part of the training today became a military member, part of a family. They were a service member, they might have been a spouse, or they might have been a children. And so we merged the attendees into families. We have military members who are single service member families. We have dual service members. They have some unique challenges. We simulated today unaccompanied service members. We also simulated today where a family moves without their service member because the service member is deployed. So we were able to simulate many of those types of things today, and hopefully build some empathy with our attendees on some of those unique challenges. So we actually had some really hands-on, real-life experiences where we had an unlikely spouse that we're able to speak up and share those experiences as relevant to what we were simulating with the training.
The PCS Challenge has been presented during the 2018-2019 school year at the Administrator's Conference, VBCPS Teacher Orientation for Continuous Learning Institute, or TOCLE, and also at several individual schools. The PCS Challenge has been highlighted nationally and internationally in the Navy publications such as The Flagship, Defense Visual Information Service, and America's Navy Forged by the Sea. March offered an opportunity for collaboration with the Office of Student Leadership and the Division Registars to share updates on assistance to transition military students into the district. Professional learning was delivered to registars on updated regulations, military power of attorney, the Military Affiliation Form, and the Military Interstate Compact. STEMathons have also been offered. A STEMathon is a learning opportunity for both teachers and students. Through data, carefully scaffolded instruction, purposeful implementation of technology, and instructional coaching, teachers have the opportunity to participate in job-embedded professional learning focused on inquiry-based instructional strategies alongside their students who are engaged in the STEMathon experience. STEMathons are a collaboration with the College of William &amp; Mary and NASOceana Dam Neck, funded through Project Grit, the DODA grant. Now I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mrs. Starr Wiggins, Military Connected School Counselor, who will share insight on the military support program initiative on social and emotional learning.
Good afternoon. Currently, military support programs collaborate with Magellan Health to support 27 military family life counselors that serve nearly 45 schools in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Military family life counselors are licensed mental health professionals who are able to provide direct social-emotional support, such as deployment and moving groups, to military students in our schools. Due to the positive feedback from schools about the military family life program, the Office of Student Support Services is exploring how to expand this program. In this audio clip, we have an opportunity to hear from a kindergarten parent, Ms. Susan Ryan, who shares her daughter's experience with the assistance of an inflight.
So when my daughter was five and in kindergarten here, her dad was deployed. And by the time you're five, you picked up on more, and you hear more, and you see more, and you know more than you do when you're three and they're deployed, or you're one and they're deployed. So one night, she got up out of bed crying, "Mommy, I don't want Daddy to die. And if Daddy dies and you die, I'll be all alone." Oh, we just sat there and cried. And I said, "Honey, you know, you never know what's going to happen from one day to the next, but we get up every day and we do our best. We're a good friend, we're a good student, and we go out in the world and we learn something every day, right? And we be brave." So I got her back in bed, and the next morning, you know, I knew it was on her mind. All I had to do was call the school. Can I talk to the inflight? Message the teacher. This is going on, this is on her mind. She's five, by the way. Could be a rough day. But I knew when I let go of her in that morning and left her here, that she had every support that she needed. And if Mrs. Brewer saw her in the hallway, and she looked glum, or she looked concerned or whatever else, it would be an arm around the shoulder, "Hey, Kate, how's it going?"
Virginia Beach City Public Schools' professional school counselors are trained on the unique culture of the military child and are provided resources to assist military families in each school. This year, school counselors begin a collaboration with military family life counselors to align best practices of the peer-to-peer transition group Anchored for Life implementation and the Division Initiative, Purple Up, which began in 2013 for military students. Other military or division initiatives include Art of Being a Military Child Celebration to kick off the month of the military child each April. This event is not only hosted yearly, but a satellite exhibit has been established at the Virginia Department of Education building to feature students' artwork. Student artwork has also been highlighted by Commander Navy Installation Command and Military Child Education Coalition Publications. During Military Family Month in November, our schools participate in Red Day. Red Day stands for Remember Everyone Deployed, and we encourage everyone throughout the division to wear red to recognize students, families, and service members who protect our freedoms around the world. Peer Transition Support Groups, such as Student to Student and Anchored for Life, continue to help transitioning students acclimate to schools within the first two weeks of their arrival. Military Support Programs supports professional learning at each Anchored for Life school. The professional learning and coaching assists in establishing a culture to assist students in their adjustment to a new community. Team leaders who are students are also empowered to develop leadership and resiliency skills. It is also important to highlight that Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Anchored for Life Clubs, have been recognized globally for best practices. We are also proud to announce that Shelton Park Elementary School has been selected as a model regional Anchored for Life school. In addition, this year, our school division was selected to field test the Middle School Anchored for Life Transition and Resiliency Program, currently creating an opportunity for all middle schools to be funded through the Department of Defense. The partnership with Anchored for Life and Department of Defense with military support programs has allowed for Virginia Beach to be integral in the development of supports assisting military-connected students globally. Next, I would like to introduce my colleague and fellow Military Connected School Counselor, Ms. Amanda Yoder, who will share insight on military support program initiatives on academic
Good afternoon. In addition to the social-emotional concerns that come with moving, a large portion of our work is with individual families to support their students' academic transitions. Some of this work comes in the form of identifying curriculum gaps and offering resources and supports to schools and families. When the students are transitioning at the high school level, it becomes even more critical to ensure students are able to graduate on time and transition smoothly. When families reach out before they move, we are able to work with them to best ensure families choose the classes, families and students choose classes that will transfer here. As a recent example of how impactful this can be, we have an active-duty family who moved here from a U.S. Embassy in a foreign country. The family reached out to us six months before the move to ask how to best align classes for their child who would arrive here as a junior, and if they could do anything to apply for our specialty programs. By having these discussions in advance, the family was able to have their previous school make some schedule changes, which assisted with the student being able to graduate on time and increased the likelihood of him being able to achieve an advanced diploma versus a standard diploma when he arrived. We also were able to facilitate the student applying to a program at the Advanced Technology Center in the same timeline as his peers. In this video, the student's mother, Mrs. Lynette Samalot, speaks about the support she received during the move. The child's currently a junior at Ocean Lakes High School.
This is the first time that we had this experience, and I have to say, it was the most amazing experience, because having that person helping you step by step, on time, what you have to do in order for you to go, and especially me, because I was coming from another country, there's Mexico City, and the classes over there, some are the same, some are different. So she was able to tell me what exactly I need to bring, or ask the school, to give to my son, in order for him to be ready. So it was very helpful having a person tell me step by step what I need to do.
Connecting with military families offers an opportunity for a smoother transition, more opportunities for specialty program access, and ensures an increased on-time graduation rate. For younger students, identifying curriculum gaps and resources to address those gaps is also an essential component of the support we provide. Constant collaboration happens to ensure a military-connected student receives proper placement regardless of whether they receive special education services, general education services, or have additional needs. To support students in their post-secondary endeavors, we meet with individual military students. We meet with seniors once in the fall and once in the spring, and underclassmen on request. During this time, we identify unique needs and resources for military students. Patterns with this population include a high rate of attending out-of-state colleges, as well as military service academy applications. We also offer parent nights on base and in schools called COMS, which stand for College Options for Military Students. In the COMS presentation, we offer families the opportunity to learn how to navigate the GI Bill and in-state tuition rules, which are different for military families. We share with them how various military-dependent scholarships, various military-dependent scholarships, and how a parent's disability status can provide money for college. I'd like to turn the presentation back over to the Director of Student Services, Mrs. Day, to present military support programs' next steps.
Moving forward into the 2019-2020 school year, Military Support Programs plans to continue to encourage and support all of our schools to apply for the VDOE Purple Star designation. Military Support Programs will be offering, as well, the PCS Challenge, or the Permanent Change in Placement Challenge, Permanent Change in Station Challenge, again, as well as presenting at TOCLE, the Teacher Orient- as presenting at Tocley, the Teacher Orientation and Continuous Learning Institute for our teachers that are brand-new and some also in other areas of school psychologists and school counselors. We'll continue to partner with content and specialty areas so that this can be tailored and offered to specific groups of staff members, including gifted resource teachers, social workers, and special education caseworkers. With regards to Anchor for Life, Military Support Programs is planning for Cohort Four at the elementary levels and is currently collaborating with Anchor for Life and the Department of Defense on the development of high school programming, as BBCPS is slated to be included as part of the Navy-wide field test for high school-level students. We're moving forward with military partnerships with NAFSI Oceana, which will be expanding the STEMathon opportunities for our schools and students. At this time, my colleagues and I are ready to answer any questions that you may have about the presentation.
Anyone have questions? Comments?
Thank you so much. It was great to have a review of everything that we're doing for these military families because 25% of our student population is military-connected. That's huge. Just kudos to Shelter Park because I got to go and see them present Mrs. Pence, and actually, this Anchor for Life Club kind of gave the direction for everybody else. And what they did was they packaged little boxes for the other students and inside, and so they were given directions to everybody, and they just did such a great job after presenting Ms. Pence that book. But in the, in the little boxes, there's a little teddy bear, and then they had like a journal that would actually have directed questions for these kids when their parents got back from deployment, because that's sometimes a very difficult time. They had note cards that they could send to their parents, so it was just really a neat, neat thing to see. So that Anchors for Life Club did a great job. It's great that we're gonna be in the, in the high schools, but what about the other elementary schools? Because we're only in 19 elementary schools. Is that something that we're gonna do, or does that come from the school, or how does that work?
It is slated we're moving into the next cohort, so we did them in cohorts, so we're moving into Cohort Four coming up in 2020.
Four elementary?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was, okay. Okay. Yeah, I think that's all. That's, that's great.
Keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Ms. Ryan?
This is one workshop presentation I wish that every resident of this city could see. I think that says that. To, to what degree do you, as counselors, I mean, do you interact with our special education staff?
So for the two of us in our position, when what we do is we make sure if students mention that they have an IEP or that they have special education needs in the transition process, we take care of all the general questions they might have, and then we refer them to the school's special education, either their PCST, or to the Carol Blackwell, who is the Special Education Parent Liaison for the division. So we don't get into the specific specialty, special education needs, but we make sure that they get a warm handoff to those that are in that area.
On the front end, yes, thank you.
I agree with Mrs. Ryan. It'd be nice if, if everyone had a chance to see this because it's not just the military-connected child, but often the students that are left behind are heartbroken because they've lost their friends, and so it's wonderful that we have counselors available that recognize that part as well. Ms. Felton?
I'd just like to say thank you. Presentation was wonderful. After being with you at a couple of your military, academic military support meetings at the Operation Smile, one of the concerns that we had was that communication with the parents and the students and making sure they were prepared when they got here. And I know I've had several conversations with Mr. Jameson concerning that because we were very concerned that they were making that transition seamlessly. So we have one, two, three, four parents speaking that you've done that. And I'd just like to know what other methods are we taking to make sure that it gets, it's good, that it gets better, because that is a hard transition to make. And I know you can remember some of the conversations we had, the cabinet period of being able to transition, getting the paperwork done, getting settled in. So Michelle, I don't know if you can speak to that or not, but...
So some of the work that we've done around communication with parents is that we have added the military tab on our homepage for BB schools. Every individual school also links back to that same military page where our contact information is, there's frequently asked questions about the division and the process. And we've also trained all the registrars so that the first face those families see in the building has a better understanding on military culture and how to support those families also.
I am so proud of the works that you're doing, and I'd just like to say thank you for hearing the voices because it was a concern, you know, went all in with you, but you sort of kind of gave it one step-by-step concern. So thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Thank you. Enjoyed this workshop.
Ready for transition?
I think we're ready. Looks like Mr. Keever's getting us ready.
He is. Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, Board members, this is a continuation of a discussion that we've been having for several years now. This is as promised on our last timeline update to you. Feedback on the community input process. The intention tonight is to share that feedback and then give you time to chew on that prior to a fuller discussion during our retreat in July about school start times. So this is really where are we today with the feedback that we've been looking for over the course of the spring? So to provide that information to you, I'll turn it over to Mr. Keever.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, Dr. Spence and colleagues. Today's administration was providing the board with overview information, including data collected during the recent community feedback survey and community meetings as a result of the school board's resolution from November 2018 directing administration to bring forward school start time options that allow adolescent students to begin school later. Our goal this evening is to provide key data points and help prepare the board for more in-depth conversation during your July retreat. In that setting, we intend to bring forward an option or two for the shift in school start times for implementation in 2020, the fall of 2020. Please allow me to review the various pieces of information in your folder so that as you thumb through, you know what we are looking at, and I would assume that you'll want to look at this after we've left the meeting today, and I just want to be sure that you know what you have in front of you. So the first item, if you open your folder on the left-hand side of the folder, would be the comment and question card that we utilized in the three community meetings that took place. There is a copy of the presentation that we're giving this evening. There's also a copy of the presentation that was provided during the community meetings. The next document is a rather thick document, but it includes the data from the Feedback E-Town Hall Survey, and it is broken down both with all of the results and then by certain reporting categories. And that information in terms of the reporting category is provided on the front page in each instance. There is also a complete listing of the comments and questions that were generated as a result of the community meetings. And then the final piece of information in your folder would include our current start times and the four options that were shared, both on the E-Town Hall Survey as well as during the community meetings that took place. So that's the material in your folder. Much of that I'll be referencing this evening, but I wanted to be sure that you had a, had a photograph of what those items were. The presentation, the presentation this evening will focus on several key items. A reminder of the 2018 November resolution and the timeline established as a result of that resolution. A quick review of the community feedback plan and the options we presented to the board in early March and subsequently shared with the community over the last month. We will look at the survey results and specific preferences gathered from that survey, and I will offer the board some specific feedback from several of the groups and employee teams that we met with in addition to the community meetings. And finally, we'll respond to board questions around the data points. Key pieces of the 2018 resolution are provided on this slide. In several of the community meetings, a specific question was asked about why there wasn't an option to not shift times. In essence, why not an option E? The response I provided on multiple occasions, as well as that which we shared with the board both in October and November during the dialogue, was that once the resolution was approved, we would be operating under the concept that start times will shift in order for adolescent students to start school later. Providing an option E and allowing stakeholders to offer a preference around not shifting simply does not align with the resolution and the direction provided in that resolution. As such, we provided four options for community review and feedback. In all cases, a shift in the start times will impact every facet of life in the school division. We acknowledge the challenges and commit to working collaboratively to address and minimize the concerns as we have a planning year of 2019-2020. By way of reminder, here are the key features of the current timeline that we're working under. This spring, based on the school board action in November, we asked the community for their feedback. I'm reporting out on that feedback now by way of data. We will come back to you in July during your retreat to have a more focused conversation around an option or two, and then we will ask you to take action on that recommendation in September. We will utilize school year 2019-2020 as a planning year with implementation scheduled for September of 2020. At this juncture, you're probably very familiar with the information on this slide. These are the current times that we utilize for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, recognizing that we have a four-tier system with high school in the first tier, elementary A, elementary B, and then middle school. As we shared with you in March, option A is provided in front of you based on feedback specifically around costs associated with the options. This information was added not only on the slide presentations for the community meetings, but also added during the E-Town Hall Survey portion. In this particular instance, option A, we anticipate the need for an additional $2.5 million in one-time costs for high school field lights. Option B, again, essentially, essentially the same tiering capacity where you would go elementary first, middle school second, high school third. Option B would potentially incur an additional $2.5 in one-time cost for field lights. Option C, with the middle school taking the first tier and then elementary taking the second and third tier and high school taking the fourth tier, it's a projected $2.5 million additional one-time cost for high school field lights. And then with option D, this would be high school remaining in the first tier, elementary remaining in the second and third tier, and middle school in the fourth tier. We project the cost of approximately $10 million in terms of one-time costs with respect to field lights at the middle school level. Moving forward, I wanted to provide for you a reminder with regard to what we said we were gonna do in March. And what we said we were gonna do in March was get with a number of different groups as well as utilize the E-Town Hall Survey component. And next to each of the groups that we met with and conducted sessions with, you can see the number of participants. I want to thank all of the groups that allowed us to come forward and spend some time with them talking about start times, especially the principal groups, teacher assembly, superintendent student advisory council, as well as members of the teacher forum. I will tell you that the community meetings were, I guess I'll use the term sparsely attended. We had seven folks at our first meeting, and the number grew in the second and third meeting to 31 and 36 participants. We appreciated the time we have with those folks as well. They certainly had a lot to share, and you can see very specifically what the sentiment of those groups encapsulated in the question-and-answer information that we provided to you. We transition into some of the survey results now. The E-Town Hall window was open from April 29th through May 15th. As you can see from this slide, over 8,400 parents and nearly 4,300 staff members completed the survey. Please note that similar to the 2017 survey, parents could select multiple levels where they currently have students enrolled. Eight hundred, 8,426 parents responded, 52% of which indicated they had current elementary school children, 37% indicated they had a current middle school child, and 48% responded they had a current high school student. These numbers are very similar to the pattern of numbers that we saw in 2017 with respect to respondents and what the different age groups were. I'm going to select OK? No, just click out of it, no. Critical software may not, not right now. This presentation will self-destruct. For the staff survey, we asked respondents to identify their current work levels as shown in the graphic as well. On this slide, you'll note that nearly 7,400 students responded to the survey. More than three-quarters of those respondents identified themselves as high school students. Just under 1,000 community members responded to the survey as well. Overall, 27,000 or so folks visited the survey page. 19,375 took the time to respond to the survey. That equates to approximately 968 hours of public comment on the topic if you consider three minutes per respondent to complete the survey itself. With respect to the details of the survey and the 19,000 respondents, many folks who perhaps were looking at the survey and keeping track of which options were first, second, third, and fourth, likely noticed a number in the 8,000-person range towards the closing of the window. Those responses belong to the registered users for the survey. Registered users provide their name, contact information, and email address. Additionally, there were 11,000 respondents who made the choice to remain unregistered or anonymous. Once the survey window closed, all respondent results were included as a part of the totals, which are accessible through our webpage and have been listed on our webpage since May 16th, the day after the survey closed. OpenGov, our service provider for E-Town Halls, conducts monitoring of the results in terms of duplicate email addresses, browser IDs, IP addresses. We have been assured they feel like our survey results are valid. As such, we're sharing all 19,000 responses as results for the community feedback. We asked a question around whether or not respondents participating in the survey had visited our landing page to review information on school start times. By way of reminder, that landing page includes research articles, includes presentations we've done for the board, it includes a timeline, and gives information that we feel like is vital for folks to take a look at when considering school start times. 83% overall of the respondents indicated they had visited the landing page. We also embedded a video at the beginning of the E-Town Hall Survey. We wanted very badly for folks to take a look at that video because we felt like it set the stage to inform the decision-making process. Nearly 80% of the respondents indicated that they had watched the introductory video. You might note on those last two slides that we had slightly lower numbers of students who both had either visited the landing page or indicated watching the video. One other question that we asked was around the idea that if implementation was scheduled for the fall of 2020, would I or my family have the time to make necessary accommodations for the shift in new times? Over three-quarters of the group strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. The highest percentage rates were for parents and staff members. The lowest percentage rate was for our students at 67%. At this point, I'm gonna transition into the specific preferences. And you may, you have this definitely on your slides, it's not in color, I apologize, but want to talk a little bit about the preferences and how the scoring process works as folks are making an indication of their most preferred to least preferred. A person's most preferred option, in essence, their first choice, is awarded four points. Their second highest choice is awarded three points. Third highest, two points. And then their least desirable choice earns a one-point designation. You can see from the overall results that the preference that gained the most support was option D. And that is with high school in the first tier, elementary A and B in the second and third tier, and then middle school in the fourth tier. The next preferred option with the overall results had option C coming forward, and that, again, is middle school into the first tier, elementary A and B in the second and third tier, and high school in the fourth tier. As you begin to then look specifically at the various groups that responded, you notice some changes with respect to preference level. When you pull out just the parents and look at just what the parents were most preferring, you'll see option C slide into the first category, option B in the second category, option A in the third, the third tier, and then option D becomes the fourth choice for parents. Staff members felt option C was their most preferred, and option D was their least preferred. Students overwhelmingly, to the tune of about 80% of the students that responded, had option D as their first choice, and quite frankly, did not provide generally a second, third, or fourth choice, thereby creating a scenario where option D was by far the highest point value for students. And when I talk about that, I'm talking about about 5,000 of the students in the 7,300 range indicated that their first choice was option D. And then community members of the 907 that responded, again, it was option D as the first choice. Second choice was C, and then you can see where A and B fell into the mix. We developed an average of what those choices looked like, and at the very bottom of the screen, you can see what those averages looked like. There are a number of different ways to look at the data that is provided by way of this survey. Another way that we wanted to look at it as we prepare you for additional discussion on it was to look very specifically at all of the adults that responded. That adult category would include staff, it would include parents, it would include community members who did not indicate that they were a student because you can make multiple selections. If you look at the adult responses, again, option C rises to the top. Option A then comes in in the second tier, and then B and D come in third and fourth. Additionally, if you look only at elementary parents and middle school parents, that is, parents that indicated, and they could have currently a high school student, but if they indicated they had an elementary student or a middle school student, you'll see that the option for that parent group was option B first, option C second, option A third, and option D fourth. Finally, I want to show you another way that we began to look at the data. And in this way, it's related to the tiering component. Now, we intentionally gave four options based on what time might you need to go to the bus stop if you're an elementary school student and you were in the first tier. And as you'll recall, elementary, excuse me, option A had the first start time at 7:30. We projected somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,500 students may need to go to the bus stop before 7:00. With option B, we wanted to ensure that no elementary school student would need to go to the bus stop before 7:00, so we pushed it back 15 minutes. As I was having conversation both with various groups that I met with, as I heard from community members in our community meetings, in essence, it boiled down to what really you have three tier options, which is true. So in combining elementary into a tier, A and B, there's an elementary tier option, which means they go in the first slot. There's a middle school option, which goes in the first slot, which would be C, and then a high school option. So we looked at the numbers across those three tiering scenarios, and you can see that a different picture begins to develop if you look at it based on tiers and not necessarily specifically the options. And in this case, generally, the preferred option were options A and B because the desire was to have elementary in the first tier. I put in there at the very bottom the filtered responses from both adult and elementary parents. That's why I coded them in black because that's not a part of the overall data, but it is a part of data that you can apply a filter to the survey results and pull that out. I believe in your data packet, you do have adult responses, and you do have elementary and middle parent responses as well. If you don't, I can certainly get that for you. Finally, I can provide for you the numbers associated with the responses. And like I did with the calculator, you can sit and do the multiplication tables and come up with how they tier out. I will just need to get it on a spreadsheet that allows for quick dissemination. But we can certainly give you the data for that as well. I also wanted to ensure that I provided tangible feedback from those groups that gave us the time to speak with them and spend time with them. And one of those groups are the elementary school principals. And the elementary school principals reached consensus of support around that first tiering scenario or option A and B. That group was particularly interested in whether their school would be an elementary A school or an elementary B school. They wanted us to answer that question on the spot. We danced around that because honestly, as we shared with you in March and as we talk about this more, there needs to be some specific conversation around, if this is the direction that we go, then we need to look at efficiencies and optimizing bus routes. There would probably be a shift in which school was in elementary A, which school was in elementary B, based on what happens with other tiers. So that was the elementary principal feedback. The middle school principal feedback, there was strong consensus, and I would say it was actually unanimous, opposition to an option. So in some cases, we were looking for consensus around a particular option. In this case, it was which option do we most disagree with? And that's, they had strong opposition to option D. Felt like it was entirely too late to start the day and entirely too late to end the day. There was split support among that group for elementary in the first tier, options A and B. High school principals were split between options D and A. That group felt like we needed to continue to have conversation around start time for contests. They recognized that the implementation was the fall of 2020 and that we would spend the better part of the fall working on specific timing after the option was selected to try to meet those concerns. Teacher assembly and teacher forum, there was general support for option A, which was most of the folks that were participating in that discussion, while there were some teachers who supported option D. When pressed a little bit in terms of why there was support for option D, there was honesty around the idea that they were high school teachers and they enjoyed the schedule that they had, so they selected the option that was most closely aligned with the schedule that they had. Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, it was an interesting scenario in that we began the discussion and it felt like they were going to be very supportive of the status quo, meaning that they would stay in the first tier. But as we began to talk and they asked some questions, it ended up that they split in thirds across option A, C, and D. And some of that was related, I think, to coursework that they were taking. Some of that was related to programs that they were involved with, and some of that was related to athletic programs, so that you could see the split there. And then the community meetings, in all candor, most of the people that joined us for the community meetings were not supportive of the shift at all, and shared that with us and provided some of that information to us by way of the comment cards and the question cards. I will say that for those that stayed after the formal presentation and participated in a one-on-one Q and A, there seemed to be more recognition that there was an understanding for why an option E was not provided once we could really get into the discussion about the direction was to create a scenario where adolescent students started later, not to ask whether or not that's something that we should do. So again, we enjoyed that experience, but don't necessarily. Yeah, it was, and it was interesting, learning experience for me for sure. Finally, I'll close the presentation by answering questions. Our goal was to come together with you in July. We can provide for you some additional data around the survey. I would ask that we do that in advance of that so that when you come in July, we can have a pretty focused conversation on the actual option or options. I recognize that a shift in times, and I said this at each one of the community meetings, has a sizable impact on every single family in the division. Whether you have a student or don't have a student, whether you're an employee or not an employee, it's going to touch just about everyone. Thankfully, 77% of the respondents that participated in the survey in the 80% range for parents indicated that, given a year to plan, they'll be able to work through that and accommodate a new schedule. And I think that that's a real plus with how the board has gone about this process. So with that, I'll be glad to answer questions.
Mr. Edwards?
The other variable that I think we need to weigh over the next six months as we wrap this up is the degree, the degree of benefit. We're treating 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM as rather, it's after 8:00, so it's, it's an okay, it fixes it. I think the requirement was to get it after 8:00. But I believe the benefit in terms of sleep patterns and stuff, there may be some variable, you know, it may marginally fix it at 8:00 and make it a whole lot better at 8:30. You know, if we could look at what others have done and whether or not 8:00 is the, 8:00 is some sort of magic fix, I think the other significant negative on D in my mind is like, we're barely fixing it. So I think we ought to factor that into our thought pattern as well.
They did give us that information on all surrounding school districts.
I, it's there, I know, I'm just asking to pull it out for you.
I'll give it to you. I'll send it to you.
Well, for me, for me, the magic thing on D is $10 million to put lights on middle school fields. That is just, when our high schools wouldn't have lights, I just, I just don't think that that is, you know, that that is economically feasible.
So in the last meeting, I asked for costs of transportation to be included in the survey, and I was told they would be, but then they weren't. So can you tell me where we are with costs on transportation?
I'm going to let Mr. Freeman talk about that.
Absolutely, I have that one. So when we briefed you back in March, we briefed you a specific number of buses for each of those options. That number was based on what I'll call an apples-to-apples comparison of what we have today, projecting that for 2020. What we know is that we have recently, and we talked about this in the recent meeting that we had, that we are, we had a request for proposal, and we have a contract that's out there that is going to enable us to optimize our routing. We are right now still hand routing our buses. And what that means is our bus stops are the same as they were the year before, and we have continued that. There is substantial optimization that can be done, we just don't know to what level. So when we discussed the consequences essentially of the tier options, it was, we knew that the number that we briefed you was high, but we just don't know how high. So that was why we made the determination of, can we give, can the facts that we can provide be significant enough for somebody to make a decision on? So that's why we recommended to not include those buses. So the numbers that we briefed you were 13, were zero for D, 13 for C, and then 27 for A and B. So I can tell you that it will not require those number of buses, and that will not require those number of drivers. It's going to be something to a lesser extent. In addition to that optimization, we have an industry-standard number of extra buses that we keep, so in case a bus goes down. We know that when we go to that optimization, we don't just go to an industry-standard percentage that we'll be able to target based on how frequently the buses get used, how many we need. So we don't anticipate we're going to need any more buses, but there is a potential we would need drivers. I can't say for certain what that number is going to be, but I would suspect, based on the optimization, we could expect that option C could potentially require zero. I don't know that, that's just a gut feeling that I have. For options A and B, we just don't know enough to know what, in addition to the number of drivers that we have right now that we would need. But I am, based on the information I have, I think we would be able to do that with the number of buses that we already have.
Okay, so I'm familiar with our discussions in the audit committee regarding transportation. I do believe we're going to be saving some money because of that transportation audit. So that's money that we're saving. That doesn't necessarily mean that we need to go ahead and spend it on this. I think that we need to be transparent about the fact that we're saving all that money. Do we then add that and use it for school start times? It's still an expense over and above what we would normally be spending if we changed the start times because routes are going to be different. We may need more buses than we would have if we didn't change the start times. So, and, and we still don't know for sure what we're going to need and how many drivers we're going to need. So I just don't feel like we can make an informed response since our, since the public doesn't know, we don't know about what those costs are going to be. And I just, it's, and all of this is very different from what we got two years ago. And I understand that that survey that we paid for with the transportation company is faulty. But we were basing our decisions, and the public was basing their decisions on that initial transportation survey in those times. When I was looking at those times, I thought, oh, I could, you know, I think I could live with those times. I think the community could live with those times. But now I'm hearing from the community, they like the theory of later start times. They just don't like any of these later start times. So that's the input that I have.
Ms. Rye?
So this speaks a little bit to Mr. Edwards' point, but I remember a few years ago my discussions with Fairfax School Board members. And in the end, they wound up compromising, and they're even bigger than us, so I'm sure they had even more challenges. And I asked her if it was worth it in the end, you know, because she, they were looking for at least an hour, and I can't remember specifically, but maybe they got 30 minutes earlier out of it, or...
They got to 8:00.
Mm-hmm. And so I think that's a discussion we're going to need to have at our retreat because it's been explained to us why we can't have the 8:30 start times. And so I think we still have to wrap our heads around the fact that this, three of these options are a very late high school start time. And we have a lot of time to think about it, and I just hope that we'll all put the thought into it and have some more, a really good productive discussion in July.
The other thing though, that, what I've heard from Fairfax is that they spent a lot of money on buying buses. I mean, quite a bit. I've forgotten how many buses they had to buy, but it was, it was in the multi-millions that they spent on buses just to make it work, just to get to an 8:00 start time. I'm not saying that we shouldn't spend money for this, but at the same time, to me, option D with having to even think about, you know, high, middle school lights, that just bothered, that really, really bothers me that we would have to do something like that. And I know that we don't want to do this, but there have been times in the past where one of the things that was on the chopping block, and it hasn't been too long ago, but it was, it was presented as an option and the community went crazy about it, was that, you know, we thought about save money to cut middle school sports. I don't ever want to have that happen, but I certainly also don't want to spend $10 million on lighting middle school fields, so.
Ms. Hughes?
Well, also I have two points. One is, I do thank all of the associated...
One is, I do think all of the associated costs should have been known prior to the survey. But also, I, I disagree that you didn't put a, I disagree with you for not putting an option E. And, I mean, you explained your reason, but it sounded mostly like we've already passed the resolution, so that's why. Sometimes people think they want things, and then when they see all the options, it's not better than what they had before. And, I mean, I'll concede that I never saw any emails before the vote was taken because I wasn't here. But we have been having emails come in here lately. And, I mean, not an onslaught of them, but we are having emails come in, and some of them are from high school students who don't wanna change the times. I haven't seen a single one that does. And I really do think that whether we change or not, or what we change it to, the community needs are the priority, and that should actually trump, we've just already passed this. It's not for us, it's for the community. And for that reason, I, I really think that a valid survey would have included that option E.
Mr. Edwards?
I was, when I had my other point, I, I almost mentioned that. And I was gonna commend you for not having it on there, because statistically, it would have skewed the data. I mean, if we are committed to making a change, which right now, the collective, we are, for those people who, um, took the, well, we don't wanna change, then their data would have been dropped out, and we would not have had an input other than the fact that they didn't wanna change. But if we were committed to change, I think it's very important that we did hear the thoughts of everybody. Uh, in other words, basically, the question was, given that we're gonna change, what do you wanna, what are the best options for you? And that, and that's exactly where I think the board is, and I'm, and I'm glad the data came back without, uh, people throwing their, their votes away. You know, I think we still have the original data, and I doubt that it's changed much. You know, recognition of the benefits and, and, uh, and the costs in terms of impact on our lives. But, um, I, I'm glad that, that we had it without that statistical skewing, uh, that, that would have.
Ms. Manning?
So, just for the record, because I know sometimes in here, we, we try to say this is what the board wants. For the record, I'm not opposed to the board revisiting, not changing start times, you know? So, I, I think that that should be part of the discussion as well.
That was implied in my comment about a productive discussion. If I could add, part of what ma- makes this a challenge is that there was a previous survey two years ago that provided the mandate, so to speak, for this board to draw up this resolution. But because of the time gap, memories fade, a lot, a lot of parents probably had moved into the area in the meantime. So, that, just wanted to share that for what it's worth.
Anyone else?
Well, I was referring to parents, by the way, when I said memories fade. I wasn't implying about any colleagues here, but.
I guess, um, my, my quick reflection on this with you all would be, it's, it's, it's very difficult as an administration to work at the direction of the board, to have that constantly flipping and flopping back and forth. At some point, when we go out and we say, okay, we don't wanna go survey the community about how we change start times unless you all agree you want to change start times, and then you say as a board, we want to. Not only do you say it, you put it in a resolution, so that we have that direction. We asked for that specific direction. And then we go out and we do this work, and we know when there's change, there's going to be some difficulty. There are gonna be people who don't like the idea of change, who get upset by the fact that we're gonna change. Because the, the hard work comes when you make the decision to change, right? And so, now we're in the middle of that, and do we really wanna now step back from that and say, never mind, we're not, we're not gonna do that, even though you already made the decision to do that? And so, I, I mean, the board can have a conversation about that. Just understand from the administrative perspective how difficult it is to move things forward when we don't have clear direction and a clear sense of trust that the board will maintain its direction as we move forward. Um, we went through a long discussion, if the board remembers, leading up to that resolution, about what the community felt about changing start times. And we provided you with a lot of data, where we surveyed out to the community about, about that. We shared all of the research, and we had a landing page for all that research. And we said, do you want, do you support changing start times? And the answer overwhelmingly was yes, we would support changing start times. And that's where you all made that decision. So, remember that there was a community push up front to say, we do wanna change start times. And now that we're into the difficult question of how, and I heard earlier, and I agree, like, well, I don't, I, I support it, I just don't like supporting it this way. Well, you know, we're trying to put the best options on the table. It doesn't mean we can't have some conversation about what those options are and what they look like, but just, just know from an administrative perspective, again, I mean, I think speaking for our staff that's doing all this work and spending all of this time on this, we need to know when the board gives us direction, that the board means that's the direction we want you to go in. And I guess it's okay at the end of the day if the board wants to revisit that direction. I mean, you obviously have that prerogative, but, but, um, I just wanna sort of state from the administrative perspective, that makes it more difficult for us.
Ms. Manning?
I understand and appreciate what you're saying. But I also did not know at the time of my vote to change school start times, that the transportation study was faulty and that we would be getting different times that would be given to us in the end to change start times. So, um, I think that that's a fair discussion to have. Um, the start times that I was looking at when I was trying to base my decision on what, how to vote to change start times was based on that original transportation study, and that's no longer valid. So, now we've got a different set of data that we're using to make our decision. So, I, I, I still am supportive of changing school start times, I just don't like any of the ones that have been given to us. That's kinda where I am.
I just wanna clarify, I don't think the general recommendations for the start times and the way we could tier them has changed. I think the only thing that's changed is that it would cost less money.
No, some of the times have changed, and there was a fifth option as well.
Right, which in the discussion with you all about this was, that really isn't a viable option for a couple of different reasons, and so, we're not gonna even put it out there for discussion. But Daniel, I'm sorry, you.
The tiers, as school bus consultants recommended, are very similar to, they, they are the exact same tiers that you see in options A, B, C, and D. School bus consultants didn't necessarily recommend a specific start time in their study. They looked at what the tiers could be and how that may impact the need for additional transportation pieces. So, as we went back to that study and as transportation worked with the team of people, we looked at what could the times actually be with the resources that we have. And in fact, with option A and B, w- we created that based on our sense that should middle, should elementary school students go to the bus stop before seven? And if they did, how many would it be in particular timeframe? So, you've used the term faulty with regard to the transportation study. I'm not sure it was faulty in as much as it may not be as comprehensive as what we're able to do now with looking very specifically at fifteen-minute increments in terms of when we need resources. That, that, that's my take. I, I think that Mr. Pace would, uh, would affirm that.
Okay, that's not what I get, Warner, from the original conversation. It, it was, it was basically like, we can't use that study to base our decisions.
Well, I, I don't think he used the term faulty, but.
Okay, okay, I'm not, I didn't say that, he did.
Okay. But, but it's a term that you used.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's not an accurate study currently, correct?
That study gave us the options that we have vetted against what we're currently doing.
Okay, I'll go back and look at my data, I don't have it with me, but I recall seeing different options than, I mean, some of them were the same or similar, but I received, I remember seeing different options.
Which brings up a great point. For, for those of you that wanna go back, so, I get a hard time sometimes in my office based on the amount of folders that I have that are set up.
I still have my folder, and I looked at it just a couple of weeks ago.
I am happy to sit with each of you and have conversation around, here's where we started, here's where the conversation went as a result of the twenty-seventeen study, which we can get back to you to do. So, I'm, I would make myself available in advance of the retreat to be able to walk you through that and look very specifically at the school bus consultant's case.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Williams?
Um, obviously, a lot of data, um, to go through, but my per, my initial response from just seeing this is, is I agree with some of my colleagues for option D, ten million dollars for middle school lights. I have a hard time with that. I have, also with option D, to start middle school at ten-ten, that is just, that's like lunchtime.
All right.
And these middle schoolers are gonna be at home at that age for two or three hours before school, so that's, that gives me some concern to only gain thirty minutes, like Vicki said. So, I don't know if we're gonna be like, cutting some of these that are, you know, but, but D, D is, is, we shouldn't even entertain that, but, you know.
I'm with you on that one. But I, can you go, go back to the slide that shows preferences for school start times options? And, and I just wanna comment on this, um.
This is the slide you mean, Ms.?
Yes, it is. And obviously, to me, it's, looks like the parents and the staff members realized, for me anyway, that, I, I mean, I, I'm kinda leaning toward option C myself, and I hate to, I hate to, you know, to like, taint anybody else's view on it, but at the same time, um, I think the parents choose option D because they might have looked at that cost involved and at that time of middle schoolers being home alone for all that time in the morning. So, I think that they had, the parents, to me, and the staff probably took a more adult approach uh, in general, because, you know, they realized that middle schoolers do not need to be at home for that amount of time in the morning after people have left work, so. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, but we had enough time to do this. We will, thank you. Mrs. Manning, you have the, um, the agenda review with us, if that's okay. And we will recess and reconvene on the dius at six o'clock.